is by Zoom app. And you can watch on YouTube as well. So now we will go to our invocation, which will be done by Reverend Dr. Richard A. Hunter, Midway United Methodist Church.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and City Council and staff of our city. On a day like today, driving around our city, I'm very thankful for our public safety workers and for our excellent streets and traffic lights at work and also the patience and compassion of our people. I've seen several people stop and assist other people. Beautiful. Difficult times. So let us go to God in prayer.
Yes, sir.
Dear God, on this day when we read the life and impact of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., we thank you for his legacy and his example of servant leadership and the many people who humbly follow in the path he laid down. We are reminded, oh Lord, that civic leaders are called to protect, to honor, and care for the least among us as well as the strong and the influential. On this day, guide this council to be a team that works together for the good of all of our citizens. We humbly pray that you will strengthen these elected leaders and their staff members with wisdom and grace for the important burdens they carry. Give them hearts and vision for the people of Douglasville, who so often do not have a voice in our time, the poor, the forgotten, the powerless, the elderly, and the children who depend on public education, safe places to play, and quality health care. I pray, oh Lord, that this council will be a team who listens to and respects one another, keep their hearts pure, and their eyes fixed on all the good for our citizens. May they plan and work in the best interest of all the people they are called to serve. And when their term of office is concluded, may their legacy be one that is lifted up for future generations as an example of selflessness, honesty, and well-thought-out decisions. Bless the teachers in our city schools and the administrators who support them. Bless the pastors and priests who lead in our churches and places of worship. Work through the nurses and doctors in our medical facilities to provide compassionate care to those who are sick. Protect and strengthen our public safety workers in their vital duties. And Father God, let us not overlook or take for granted the many people in our city who behind the scenes make this city a good place to live. Bless those persons who maintain our streets, that collect our garbage, that clean our buildings, that cook and serve our food, and repair our utilities at such a time as this. We are grateful, oh Lord, for all of them. We ask this in the name of the God of creation, the one who gives us life and the freedom to accept grace and give that grace freely to others. Amen.
Oh, man. Woo, that was great, Pastor. I think I want that to be written down. That's the priest right there. Thank you so much for the invocation.
I will definitely send it to someone at the office there if you want to include it in the minutes.
Yes, sir. I love that prayer. That was beautiful. Really, it's like a spiritual vision, and it helps us to stay a city of civility. So thank you so much.
You're right, Madam Mayor. This is recording. I think I'm gonna take it to my office and listen to it, too.
That was very good.
Yes, if Kristen would send me the email, or I'll just send it back to her by the email.
Thank you so much, Pastor Hunter. We really appreciate that. God bless you and Midway Church.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir. So now we'll move on with our presentation, which will talk about how we'll conduct the meeting, and then we do have a presentation from the election for 2025 presented by Mr. Milton Kidd, Director of Douglas, excuse me, Douglas County Elections and Voter Registration. So before we start the meeting, I would please ask the council members, once I call your name, if you'll permit me to confirm that you are members and that you are participating with the meeting tonight. And so council members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative as saying here. So I'll start with Mayor Pro Tim, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
I am here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilperson Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
I am here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Councilmember Howard Estes.
I'm here as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And our statesman, the last person on the roll, is Councilmember Chris Watts.
Here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Staff, when I call your name, would you please, or your office that you're representing, please respond in the affirmative as well? From the City Manager's Office, our City Manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Our Deputy City Manager, Ms. Chelsea Jackson. I can hear you.
Madam Mayor, Chelsea is having a technical disability, but she is here.
Oh, thank you. I see your face. Our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Karen Callen.
I'm here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Our City Clerk's Office, Ms. Vicky Acker.
I'm here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And our City Attorney, we have representation by Mr. Dodson or Ms. Miranda Jordan, Attorneys Jordan.
I'm here, Madam Mayor. This is Miranda Jordan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. And our Police Department, looks like we have our chief here. Got some Fort Valley State on.
Yeah, I'm here, Madam Mayor.
Good to see you, Chief. Welcome back.
Yes.
And we send our condolences to Councilmember Elena Hudson and the loss of her grandfather, praying for the Hudson family. So thank you all for confirming that you're here. And again, we are starting this meeting. We'll do the general information. Do we have any public, anyone signed up for public comments? IT Department.
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, thank you so much. So general instructions, we'll handle the council meeting in this manner. Agenda items will be handled by the Committee Chairperson, they'll read the agenda item, then myself or councilmembers are possibly asked questions. The Committee Chairperson will make a motion, because this is a voting meeting. Our City Clerk will take the second, and then she will conduct us and how we'll vote so that she'll have everyone accounted for when we take that vote for those agenda items that we're gonna handle this evening. Now we'll move on to our presentation by Mr. Milton Kidd.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, and-
Good afternoon. Good to see you, Brother Kidd.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. I do have with me my Deputy Director, Ms. Tisha Green is on the line, as well as my Elections Coordinator, Mr. Malcolm Amvala. We're going to tag-team this presentation.
Yes.
We thank you all for inviting us once again on this municipal election season as we go over the 2025 Municipal Elections Calendar, as well as discussed the current population size and district information for the offices that are up for elections this year. We will begin the discussion. Mr. Amvala.
You're having us. I'm gonna try to share my screen. If you guys can let me know if everything's looking good. Is I able to see that?
Glasses. Yes.
Yes, we're able to see it.
Okay. So in November, you guys have four seats as of right now up for election. It's not gonna be a citywide like 2023. It's Ward One, Two Post One, Three Post One, and Three Post Two. This is a little different because not all 10 of our municipal polling places will be open. Only about, as of right now, our last check in this number will change not too much by the dozens, not even the hundreds throughout the year, but looking around 19,700 registered voters. Only 10 Election Day polling places, as I mentioned. We will be doing three early voting locations this year.
Let me touch that, Malcolm. We have other elections going on this year. We have a countywide election based off of the state, so we like to maintain continuity of operations. Therefore, we'll be running three advanced voting locations for the entire year based off of the other elections that we also have. Mr. Amvala.
So obviously, it comes to the billing. We've changed things around. We've been working with our own board. We will be presenting to our Board of Commissioners as well in the coming days. Anything like this needs to get approved by them, but we are going to be billing based on population of that election's eligible turnout. So this is gonna be, not being a full citywide, is going to be lower. That's a rough estimate of the figures we're looking at at the bottom there of 59,000. And again, this is kind of a brief overview. We'll be following up with you guys in subsequent meetings. But here's just a timeline you guys should be aware of. We've already coordinated with Mrs. Acker. She's aware of the publication of qualifying fees by the end of this month. And then there's a little bit of a break until August with the qualifying period. These are more key dates, registration deadlines, something to advertise. Again, early voting has been greatly expanded in the past four years or so with three weeks of mandatory early voting, as well as two Saturdays, and Election Day is the Fourth of November. We have this calendar for you guys. Really, it's gonna be those last two items, the municipal election. We'll disseminate this. We'll begin disseminating this. Happily provide you guys a copy to distribute as you see fit. We're here really to answer any questions you may have tonight.
Thank you. We have any questions from council members?
Madam Mayor? Councilman Watts?
Thank you.
My question, is there a sploshed on this election also on the ballot?
There is not. There is not scheduled to be a sploshed this year as of right now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Any other council members, you can state your name and then ask a question for Mr. Kidd or Mr. Abdullah. Okay, I guess you can proceed, Mr. Kidd. Do you have another presentation for us?
Are we presenting the first part of the Intergovernmental Agreement this meeting?
I can't see my link to see what all you have.
It, the, I don't believe that we're presenting the second piece at this time. It's just the Intergovernmental Agreement to conduct this election. I think you all are voting on that at your February meeting.
Okay, so we don't need to go over that, Ms. Acker? Is that on our, I can't do my link at the same time for the meeting. Do you know what's up here?
That's up to Ms. Marcia.
Actually, Madam Mayor, it's up to you all. While you have Mr. Kidd here, if he's prepared to just address some of the basics, we can. I would assume, Director Kidd, that the substantive matters in the agreement have really not changed. So, you know, unless the elected officials were looking to address anything specific, I do believe it would be a standard agreement, as we've done before in the past, to conduct the election. As was stated, the only thing that's on this ballot will be those individuals who are seeking office in those posts that were represented.
Yes, ma'am. This is the standard Intergovernmental Agreement. The only thing that changed was the pricing structure, to which we just discussed that for this particular election. Because it is a smaller election, that's why that pricing structure did change. But the Intergovernmental Agreement has been transferred to both your legal counsel and legal councils for the county. And I don't believe that there were any substantive changes to that agreement. But like you say, if this council has any questions, I'm fully prepared to go over that with you all.
Well, Mr. Kidd, if you can give us just a brief overview.
The brief-
Once you see what the bullets are, you know the most important things that we should know.
The, I think everything has been stated at this point. This is a, this is a district-specific election. So we do understand that this will only be the offices that are represented. We don't know at this time how many individuals will qualify for those races. So once we get further into this election season with the number of individuals that qualify, then we will have more information to present. We are ahead of the game for the most part with everything for this municipal election season, because working with your city clerk, we began on the first day of this year.
She is on, she's always prepared. So will there be an opportunity for training?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. There will be training dates established for this, as well as every election season. As we get further along in the year, I would say probably, we're already working on establishing our training dates. I will have a more definite training scheduled by probably the February meeting to present along with the Intergovernmental Agreement.
Okay, that sounds wonderful. Thank you so much. Councilmembers, is anyone else having any questions for Mr. Kidd, Director Kidd? Okay, we don't seem to. Oh, do I see someone asking a question? Okay, if not, thank you so much, Mr. Kidd. We really appreciate you coming in and all the work that you're doing with us to help us to have fair and impartial elections in the city of Douglasville. We look forward to looking over the Intergovernmental Agreement next month. And we are appreciative of the work that you and our city clerk have been doing to get us prepared for elections this fall.
Yes, ma'am. I know, I speak for myself and my team. We thank you all for being a partner to Douglas County and ensuring that all of the citizens of Douglas County and the city of Douglasville have access to the ballot box. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you so much for taking time to speak with us this evening.
No problem. You all be safe out there now.
Thank you, you too. Yes, sir. Alrighty, so those are our announcements and presentations. And now we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I opened the floor for a motion for an adoption of the regular meeting agenda for January 21st, 2025. Thank you. Was that Councilmember Watts?
I was, yes, and I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So it's been moved by Councilmember Watts and seconded by Councilmember Estes to approve the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for tonight, which is January 21st, 2025. All those in favor of approving this agenda, please say aye.
Aye. Excuse me, Madam Mayor, please excuse me for interrupting. Councilman Davis texted me and said he couldn't see us. Can I please walk him through? I've been trying to text. I think it's not going through. Just give me two seconds.
Yes, ma'am.
I can hear. I ain't got to see. I can hear it. I can talk.
Where's your camera, Councilman Davis?
It's on.
No, go down to the very bottom. Do you see those little people? It has like how many, it has a number right next to it. I think it looks like, well, how many people? I don't know.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, click that, Councilman Davis. And then once you click that, look to the very top, and you'll see something that says view in the host. Then you'll be able to see everybody.
Okay, we just gave him a button to click to start his video. Councilman David, did you see that button to start your video?
I'm just hearing it just like it is.
Okay.
Oh, there you are.
I ain't got to be seen. I need to be heard.
I know, that's right. Well, it's good to be seen and heard. Good to be seen and heard. Alrighty, well, thank you all so much.
He was trying to throw me under the bus, saying, who said you wanted to see my face?
Oh. You're keeping your ward partner together. So-
Yes.
The floor has been properly moved and seconded to approve item 25-028. All those, I apologize. Yes, all those in favor of approving this agenda item, which is the adoption of the regular meeting for tonight, January 21st, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Sounds like the ayes have it. Item 25-028 is unanimously approved. Now we'll move on to the adoption of the, okay, thank you, approval of the minutes of January 9th, 2025, the Legislative Work Session, and minutes of January 13th, 2025, regular meeting. I'll open the floor for someone to make a motion to approve item 25-027.
I'm, so I'm-
Thank you, Councilman Estes. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. It's been properly moved in second to approve the minutes, which is item 25-027. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns about this item? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item 25-027 is approved. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. I've opened the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember, Mr. Estes. Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. It's been properly moved in second for the consent agenda. Councilmember Estes made the motion. Councilmember Davis approved the second. So do we have any questions, comments, or concerns about the consent agenda? Thank you. I don't see any or hear any. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Oh, had a last aye. Any nays? Okay, if not, then the consent agenda is approved as presented. Now we'll move on to Committees. Economic Development Committee, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in finance.
Thank you, sir. Housing and Community Affairs Committee, Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Housing and Community Affairs Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Personnel and Organization Committee, Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. The Personnel and Organization Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Planning and Development Committee and Public Improvement and Beautification Committees, chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for planning and development or public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee, Councilmember Samuel Davis.
The bid is set, Sam. Thank you.
Councilman Davis, thank you. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
No business under public safety tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism, yes, ma'am. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one night of the ninth to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Northside Trail Project's rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity, called RACE, grant, it's a grant application. Ms. Mann presented this the other night. I'm assuming she's on right now. You have anything to add to your presentation the other night, Ms. Mann?
Just an, Alicia Mann, 6695 Church Street. Just an update from the meeting last week. Attached in your agenda items is the memo that contains the map from the Northside Trail Plan. Also highlighted on that map is the Georgia Power Easement, which is the segment of the trail that we are looking to acquire grant funding through the RACE grant.
Thank you. I know one of our council members, I think it was Mayor Pro Tim maybe, that had asked about that. Appreciate that being included. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yes, I don't have the attachment on mine unless I take this down and bring up.
Can we show that, Sam?
Yes, sir. We can get Mr. Post to bring it up, Mr. Post, if you will.
Thank you.
We go.
Okay.
Make it big.
Yeah, can you give us a, just kind of a start or walk us through this picture?
Ms. Mann?
Thank you.
So, so the Georgia Power Trail, I mean, excuse me, Northside Trail will have, has a Georgia Power Easement going from Malone Road and is to connect over through just north of Skipping stone way to follow the whole Georgia Power Transmission Line. There's also connections that'll go down on the old Dallas Highway, Down East Strickland. There's also trail system that will go down Malone Street, James D. Simpson, as well as Chicago Avenue. Those are opportunities for the trail pathways. It's all just to connect our parks, such as Jesse Davis Park, Willing Workers, just to connect them so anyone can get, use the trail system to move from one side to the other.
That is fantastic.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, does it stop at Willing Workers?
No, ma'am. It goes all the way down to skipping stone way. I don't know if you can see it. It zoomed in a little bit. Down, just north of it through almost making it to Chicago Avenue, just within the city limits.
Okay, so this will be a walking trail and/or bicycle trail?
Yes, ma'am.
Also, is this also an opportunity, I think we talked about this years ago, that we may have like some monuments that people could stop and read?
We can definitely add that along the trail once we enter the design phase, where we know exactly where to put it along the trail.
Okay, great. And do you think-
Please do.
Maybe have benches and-
But is there any, Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Okay, no other questions, Madam Mayor.
Alrighty, we, I lost sound for a minute.
Do we have any other questions? Mayor Pro Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, trying to be clear about this. Each of these numbers on here is representing one of the trails. Am I understanding this correctly, that all of the trails are going to follow existing streets and the power line right-of-way?
That is correct.
So what's the difference between the trails and building sidewalks in all these streets?
It's just the trail, so the multi-use trail would just be wider. So it'll be 10 feet wide, a multi-use trail. And in the plan, the design is to kind of have like a one-way going, one-way going, one-way going, one-way and another-way going the other way.
You mean on both, on both sides of the street?
No, on one side of the street.
Okay, so what part of the right-of-way is going to be utilized? Are they, are we gonna widen out the street a little bit to, so, so to sort of resemble more like a bike lane? Or are you gonna build it on to where a sidewalk would normally be?
So the plan outlines for it to be on the sidewalk. I mean, so if the sidewalk is on the right side of the street, the trail is proposed to be on the left side.
Okay, so it'll occupy its own zone basically along the right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this is similar to the Silver Comet Trail, a 10-foot-wide concrete path?
Yes.
Yes. For everyone, this is actually a multi-use trail. So one of the key differences in this than a sidewalk, Councilman Watts brought up the point. It's close, it actually mimics Silver Comet Trail. The belt line, it's something along those lines. So a key difference is funding. It's part of the reason that we're seeking this type of funding to do a project this large. We're talking about upwards of more than $50 million, because you want to connect this to make this a regionalized system to connect to the Silver Comet Trail or potentially connect on the south end to the belt line, which eventually that will connect to South Fulton. So that's the overall goal for this project. So it's far more comprehensive than just a sidewalk project.
Yeah, it's, it's part of that same system that they've been talking about down at Boundary Waters along the Chattahoochee. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is, that is the goal and the intent, to make this more of a trail system that would connect to a more regional trail that even could potentially connect like some of the trail systems in the state are connecting to other states.
Outside of the, what we talked about at Boundary Waters, is the county working on a, on their own regional trail system right now that this will tie into as well?
I believe so. I believe Mr. Bass is online. He could probably talk about the Chattahoochee Lands Project. This would all work to connect to that system as well. But we would have the, we would start in the north side with a trail system where we, we know we have trailheads available that we can manage. trailheads available, um, that we can manage, especially with the Silver Comet Trail, and then, uh, what's being built along Highway ninety-two. And this would just connect on the south side. Mr. Bass, do you have, um, comments on that?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So, uh, to that point, the county is working on a connectivity plan as well, um, throughout the entire county, which ultimately will connect to the other trail plans, part of the Atlanta Regional Commission, overall multi-trail unit, so this all coincides with that particular plan.
This, this is, this is fantastic. I just, I, I love the, how this is coming together.
Great. It's empowering.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, any other comments from council? Madam Mayor, anything?
No, sir.
Well, if there are no other questions, thank you, Ms. Mann, and thank you, Mr. Bass. Uh, that's all we had tonight under par, uh, Recreation, Culture, and Tourism, Madam Mayor. I forgot, we gotta vote on it. I'm looking for the number, somebody can, there we go. Alright, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to uh, approve item number twenty-five dash zero-two-five.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve item twenty-five dash zero-twenty-five. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved by the Chair, Councilmember Watts, and second by Councilmember Davis, to approve item twenty-five dash zero-two-five. We have had some discussion, but are there any more comments? Do we have any other concerns or anything to say in regards to this item? Thank you. I don't hear any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item twenty-five dash zero-twenty-five is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, we are done with Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Transportation Committee, Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
No business tonight under Transportation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Burdanley. Do we have any other business tonight from councilmembers, from the elected officials?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a call. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Davis, um, yesterday, the Martin Luther King, um, program was really, really great. I saw Councilman Davis there. He goes every single year, why didn't you get me a ticket? I've asked you all the time, why do you get me a ticket?
You don't get up at six o'clock in the morning.
Yes, I would have. I just wanted to say, Councilman Davis, you have the best of both worlds. Like, you went to the King, um, ceremony, and then we had the presidential election. I know you would have been there, Councilman Davis, but you were at the King thing. But you have been one at one of the rallies. What, how was it? I mean, how was one of the rallies? It's cool that they had the thing yesterday.
It was good.
Okay, cool. Alright, no more, no more, um, questions and comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I would like to remind councilmembers, I know we have Cities United, uh, this week at the latter part of the week. So, um, contingent upon anything happening with the weather, we anticipate that it will be cleared up by Friday, and so we just wish travel mercies for everyone and excited about our training at the top of the year. So, after that, we'll get prepared for our retreat, which is the second week of February. So, we have a lot going on in this first quarter. Do we have any other comments from councilmembers? Any other business? What we need to cover tonight or discuss? Thank you. I don't see any. We'll move on then to updates from our city staff, our, um, staff attorney, Ms. Maren Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Jordan, for preparing us this evening with all the legalities that we needed from the governor's office to, um, conduct our meeting tonight. We appreciate your work.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our Chief of Police, Dr. Gary Sparks.
Uh, no business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, uh, Chief. It was good to see you. Um, our City Manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the only, uh, question or comment or feedback, um, I was looking for, um, from you all, um, is that I know that Douglas County Government is closing tomorrow, um, but there's a variety of openings from the school district, and I'm not quite certain if Douglas County Schools will be open tomorrow. I know that Paulding will be. Um, originally, we talked about either a delayed opening or opening tomorrow. Um, I do know that when the school systems are closed, our employees struggle, um, with coming into work. Um, I could go either way. Um, I know the chill in the air. Employees would love to be at home. So, um, but there is a cost to closing, um, city government, as you all know, because we still have to pay our essential workers and, and, you know, that's, that's not always an easy feat, so, um, I would love to hear your feedback if you're interested in closing city offices and opening back up on Thursday, or if you would rather do a delayed opening tomorrow, um, until it warms up a little bit.
What is the forecast? Has anyone heard the re, most recent forecast?
Um, I believe, Mr. Roberts, are you on? Melissa may be on too, um.
I would retire.
But I'm hearing that tomorrow morning is gonna be like eleven degrees.
Hmm, and our kids can't stand out there, that's cold.
Yeah.
Yeah, delayed.
City Manager, what, uh, the, did you say the county was closed?
Count, county government is closed tomorrow.
Can we do either or? Like, can we make a decision if it is open, what we're gonna do, and if it closes, what are we gonna do?
Um, typically, what I, you know, what I would rather do is, because of course, we gotta communicate out to all of our staff, and with it being, you know, six-thirty tonight, um, not all of our staff members are on email or have cell phones, so, you know, it's a matter of trying to get in touch with them. If, if it is to close, um, you know, I would like to make that call tonight, if that's what you all want to do. Um, the temperatures tomorrow, uh, don't look as if they're gonna really get above, uh, thirty-six. So, again, it, it's just gonna be a matter of being really cold tomorrow, and depending upon where our employees are traveling to, some may not necessarily be able to get to City Hall. Um, I, I don't have a problem closing. I just want you all to know, you know, that's two days that, you know, we'll have to pay, um, that overtime for our essential workers, because they'll still be working. Um, that's public services and, um, and police, so they won't be off.
Don't we need to get our binders for, um, Cities United?
Yeah, we, we can still make accommodations for you all to get your stuff. That's not a problem.
To get them, so.
Yeah, we can, we can, we'll make those accommodations for you all.
I would be in favor of closing only because the counties already closed, the temperatures are, uh, very cold, and usually, they compare the city, the county, WSA, the school system, so if one closes, then the rest of them close. And it will be difficult to have, as you're saying, those parents for different governments, so that's the only reason why I would say I'd rather lean on the side of caution and pay the essential workers the extra money and have those who, uh, don't necessarily, we are in need it, but not in, in emergencies like this, so. So, I'm just in favor of closing altogether, outside of essential workers.
Her hand up, Mayor.
Oh, I apologize. Ms. Hut, uh, Councilmember Hudson.
No, Madam Mayor, no apologies necessary. I was waiting, um, to hear your thoughts, and I think I agree with you completely, you know, just, I know we're not seeing the effect of so much of right here, but I, and, you know, the videos I'm seeing in Atlanta, it looks a little bit worse for sure, and I know we have a lot of employees traveling outside of the county to get to work, and so that would be, you know, my biggest concern is how many employees we have commuting.
Nice, yes.
I agree, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Miller had her hand up too, Mayor.
Councilmember Miller in. I apologize, I didn't see.
No, you're fine, you're fine. We're all just kind of rolling with it right now. Um, I was pretty much going to say exactly what Councilwoman Hudson just said. You know, I'm not as concerned about the temperatures for adults. I mean, we are adults, we do have coats. Um, and I haven't heard what school system's going to do yet, but I am more concerned for our employees who are in other areas, because we're seeing reports where, you know, right now, um, I'm not sure, I, we've got the news on right now, the weather, it was like summer mountains getting snow. But I think everybody is getting snow all the way around us, and I definitely want our uh, employees to be safe who are having to travel in from other areas, and without knowing if the school system is going to close, you know, I hate to wait on them, because they may not call it until, who knows, you know, four AM or something. So, I'm, I'm okay with closing it. Um, if you guys are okay with it, I do understand that there's a price for that, so if, if financially we should not, I respect that as well.
Thank you.
And then, Ms. Danley, um, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I see Dr. Burdanley's hand.
Yes, um, I have a question. So, if we close, that mean that all of our employees, they get paid, right? Or are they using their sick time?
No, no, no. If, if you do, if we close City Hall, um, essentially, what'll happen is, is they'll be paid for that day, and then those essential employees would be compensated based on our, um, pay rate for essential employees doing inclement we, weather.
Okay.
And that is in policy. Yes, we do have a policy for that.
Alright, also, so are there departments that, um, have a heavy number of phone calls that come in, like planning and zoning, that if some staff may can work from home and answer the phone if they have a city phone?
Um, w- we do our best, those who are, um, salaried employees, we work, it's hard to do a hybrid-type system. Um, because we're either gonna be on or we're gonna be off, and a lot of that has to do with how we compensate hourly employees. So, oftentimes, we either need to do a delayed opening, or we need to just say we're gonna close, um, and we just make the announcement to the public, so the public is aware we're closed, um, for today, very similar to what we did during the, um, Christmas break when we were closed for that week, and so any calls would just be returned on that Thursday. Most of us will still, to some degree, as I said, the, um, exempt employees will still be working, but it's, it's very hard to catch phone calls and do a hybrid situation just based on pay.
Thank you. We have, any other questions, Dr. Burdanley?
So, what if the Douglas County School System is open, then what?
Um, well, I just got message and word from the superintendent, they are open. It really is, it's our, at our discretion. Um, again, I, this is one of those situations where I could have gone either way. I didn't want to just close, and then some of you all said, hey, wait, you know, we don't have, you know, snow, our, our streets are fine. Just wanted to make you aware, of course, that there are several employees who may live in other areas, that it may be difficult for them to travel, um, to certain places. And, um, you know, anytime we close, there is a cost to that, so I just wanted to make you aware. We'll, we'll, you know, make the adjustments in the budget, but just wanted to make you aware.
Well, my opinion is, if someone cannot, if the school systems are closed, and I think if we have staff that have children, if they want to take them, but if they decide to stay home, then they can use their vacation or sick time.
Alright, so I'm hearing some, I'm hearing some closed, some open.
But I am, but, but I'm okay with the majority. I mean, if the majority says close, then I'm go, I'm, I'm gone.
Shut it down, work from home.
That's what it looks like, the majority says close. Councilman Estes, did you have a question?
I, uh, not so much a question as, as a comment. I mean, it was, we were talking earlier. Um, you know, we have snow on the streets down here. Um, and it's not gonna get
Better.
To, for that to melt away by the start of business tomorrow, so I, I have, I don't really plan on dr, trying to drive anywhere. So, I hate to, I hate to expect the employees to come in.
And you're closer to Atlanta. I mean, Riverside Parkway is closer to the city.
Most of our employees, so are there any employees that can work from home and answer the phones? If we're closed, if they have a city phone?
I mean, we, we can have someone answer the phone. Um, the, the issue, I would just say, is the majority of our business is, is not really answering the phone. I mean, but we, we can do that. Yeah, we, we can do that.
No, I was just trying to see, what is the, what is the, is there a department that's so busy that one day will make a big difference?
The, the departments that'll be, that'll make a difference, we the ones that are working, and that's your public services and police.
Okay, great.
They will be work.
They will be working. Councilman Watts had a question, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Watts?
I don't, uh, have a question. I just, uh, knowing that Howard's area's got more snow than, like, I've got. I know the, I know the school system, and I'd be very surprised if they don't backtrack. If they're, if they're leaning towards being open right now, they've got a part of their school system that's got snow on the ground, and it, like Howard said, it ain't going anywhere, so I would.
But it's not official.
Yeah, I, and I don't, yeah, and.
You said it's not official that they're closed. Yeah, I'm getting ready to go over there, but you're right, Coach. I just looked out my window, and there's no, uh, snow, actually, to be honest, y'all, I haven't looked outside all day. So, please let me recant what I said earlier. I just thought that there was no snow anywhere, but, um, I just looked out my window. Y'all go, no, don't open, and then close on, um, Wednesday. Like, literally, close on Wednesday if you need to.
Thank, thank you all for your, thank you all for your feedback, Madam Mayor. Sounds like we will be opening City Hall on Thursday morning. Um, Community Relations is online, so Jason, um, Madam Clerks, if you all can, uh, get that message um, out to the public. Thank you all, appreciate your feedback.
If weather permits, Ms. Hudson.
Thank you. Be safe. We'll be fine. It's not, we'll be fine.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from councilmembers?
Yeah, I am in my right mind, y'all. Okay. With Sam, don't you even go there, because you don't even have, don't go to Sam. Don't, don't. Not today, trust me, it's not. Mayor, you better go ahead and adjourn right now.
Okay, we have any other business? We have, City Manager. We have anything else, City Manager? I didn't know he was on the line, so I didn't mean to, uh, not have, have, give him an opportunity to speak. Please apologize to him for me. Um, do we have comments from citizens and delegates? I asked at the top of the meeting if we had any, um, public comments, but we didn't have any. Has anyone joined? Do we know of IT or Mr. Post?
No, ma'am, we do not have anyone.
Okay, if we don't have any other business then to come. Oh, yes.
Yes, uh, I just wanted everyone to know, the elected officials, that their travel ba, uh, binders, uh, for the city summits is in their boxes at City Hall.
Oh, great. In our first class, are they, it, are the classes, do they start Friday or, or Thursday? They start Thursday. Okay, so we do have some time, maybe to let the weather, um, calm down before we get our binders.
Yeah, and if you all don't mind, I don't mind if my, the essential workers, if, uh, we're closed, when they pick up my trash, I'll meet them with some hot chocolate. I'll meet them with hot chocolate, even if they didn't deliver anything.
Deliver her binder, okay. Well, thank you all so much. If we don't have any other business, we gotta take this show on the road. If we don't have any other business, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Stay safe.
Thank you, you too.